Good evening. We need to call the June 11th, 2020 work session of the Keystone Central School District Board of Directors to order. We will begin with the salute to the flag and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's begin with the roll call.
Mrs. Donahue? Mr. Elling?
Present.
Mr. Johnston?
Present.
Mr. Koch?
Mr. Koch is connecting to audio at the moment.
I can see him. Ms. Lynch?
Present.
Mr. Miller?
Present.
Mr. Probert?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Strauss?
Present.
Eight members present.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have no presentation scheduled for tonight unless there's been something that has come up since the agenda was put together, but I'm guessing that's not the case. Do we have any visitors signed up to speak?
No, there are no visitors signed up to speak.
Okay, well then we'll go into the superintendent's report. Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Just wanted to announce that the senior graduation videos for Bucktail High School and Central Mountain High School were released on June 2nd. They're still available for viewing and celebrations on the main page for the district website as well as each of the high school pages. We've received a lot of positive comments from members of the public, even a lot of folks from out of the area who were able to view the graduation videos. And I just wanted to give a great shout out to our high school teams who put those videos together along with Bill Crowell of Budget Artist who helped make them a success under the circumstances that we were working with. We also just completed yesterday five days of professional development for the professional staff and support staff. There's an additional two days of today and tomorrow for support staff and also some teachers who still who were not able to trade out of the personal professional learning time and been receiving some positive comments about that professional development. I know that it's been a challenge for our teachers and staff to be doing remote professional development for that many days in a row. It can be exhausting. But I applaud them for sticking in there and we're going to continue to do our best to get back to a point where we can do face-to-face professional development as soon as we can do that safely. Special thanks to the directors for putting those trainings together will be Elizabeth Barnhart, Lisa Harvey, Christina Manning, and Megan Hall. So thank you very much for all your help in pulling that together. From March 16th to present, we've served 84,360 breakfast and lunch meals. Our food program is scheduled to end on June 25th. We've decided not to continue that through the summer because of a few different obstacles, but mostly the numbers have decreased. I think there's a lot more other places in the community that are also providing food sources for families. And some other difficulties, we've decided that I think our best bet is to finish that out on June 25th. The PIAA released guidelines yesterday regarding students returning to sports-related activities in school. We do have a draft plan that's currently being reviewed by our district solicitor. I hope to bring that draft plan forward next week for your review and a presentation along with our athletic director for Central Mountain High School, our high school principals, and also our athletic trainers. And this, our plan is not specific to athletes. It includes athletes as well as band members who would also be part of summer programming. And we plan to begin those face-to-face activities on or before July 1st. There's some confusion about whether schools can start before July 1st if their plans are approved and submitted to PDE. So still getting clarification on that. Our athletic director, athletic trainers, trainers and secondary principals deserve a lot of credit for creating a process that I believe will allow our students to become actively involved in a manner that promotes the health and wellness of the students in our district. I know everyone's anxious to get back to to normal and we're going to try to do that in the best way we can without putting ourselves in a predicament for reopening schools in the fall for all students. We've also begun to draft a plan for the reopening of schools and how we're going to allocate the CARES funding to support that plan. Much of the guidance provided has been very vague and in some cases conflicting, still seeking clarifications through our IU from the Department of Ed. One of the biggest obstacles at this point still remains to be transportation restrictions on buses and transporting students. We did develop electronic surveys for staff and families so that we could get feedback on transportation, technology, and instruction. We plan to use the feedback to further develop our plans in a way that will work for our community. We do want to provide families with choices among various environments that include face-to-face and virtual options. I strongly believe that parents need to have a voice in which learning environment is best for their children. And finally, in the area of curricular resources, next week, we plan to provide you with a request for an elementary phonics resource. Following our curriculum audit last year, we determined that our core resource does not offer a robust phonics component. And after careful evaluation, we believe we found a viable resource for next school year. Megan Hall, along with DPL Lisa Lucas led a committee to evaluate and select the appropriate program. And we'll be providing you with more details next week when we do have the quote for that resource. And that's all I have for everyone at this point.
Are there any questions for Ms. Martin? Okay, then we'll move to section E, reports. You've received treasurer's reports, the financial reports, and the student enrollment reports. Are there any questions or comments? While we're on information discussion items, even though they're not on the agenda, are there any committee reports? Mr. Johnson, I know you're you're really excited to speak about the facilities committee.
I I would, but my audio keeps cutting in and out, so.
No.
Nice. Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes. I feel like a horizon guy.
Yeah, we, the committee met on the second of this month and we reviewed just a few things as far as where we were at this point. We talked about the the projects that are ongoing. And I'll find my notes here real quick. There's several projects that were going underway, the ones that we had talked about in the past, the middle school ones. And they are listed in the minutes from the meeting. And we, everything seems to be going on schedule. We did have a delay according to what Rob had told me in the start of the turf. That was the, the project was supposed to start, I believe, today. But the project that they have been working on, the company had been working on prior to that had been delayed by weather and so on. So as a result, I think they're shooting for next Thursday to start. And they still are looking at approximately, the finish date is bumped maybe a couple of days, maybe third or fourth of July. So but as far as the other projects, everything else seems to be moving on schedule. The other thing that we talked about was, I know that Mrs. Donahue had requested maybe exploring what would the possibility of putting some type of air conditioning into Liberty Curtain Elementary. We talked about that. Rob has looked into a couple of different possible things that wouldn't necessarily be permanent, but would could be put in there because we're not sure what will happen with the building in the next few years, whether we'll renovate, whether we build a new facility or whatever. So it would be something that would be kind of a temporary thing. And I know that he's looked into some possibilities and the committee has kind of directed him to go ahead and look at what the possibilities and bring back some some cost figures on those. So that should be looked at at the next meeting we have, which is scheduled for the 30th of this month. We also talked about the status of where we want to go with the Dickey School Building. I guess the process, first of all, we mentioned, we talked about the Tiger Den, and I guess that is going to be retaken back over by the by the city of Lock Haven. And I guess they've already voted to do that. And the thing, we want to keep moving with the process on what we want to do with the building. We don't want it sitting there. So what we're recommending to the board is that you we as a board look at getting some appraisals done as early as July so we can get an idea of where we want to go with it and possible.
I'm sorry, Jeff, I I lost you. Can anyone else hear Jeff?
No, Mr. Johnson is frozen.
Am I back?
You're back.
Okay, we, I don't know how much you missed, but we are going to recommend as the committee that we have the board move ahead and authorize appraisals, a couple of appraisals done on the building so we know where we stand with it. And then so we can move ahead and do something with it in the in the fall, probably by October. Try to look at maybe an auction or or something along that line. And
Isario went.
Yep. Mr. Johnson, your audio is gone again.
Want to make sure we have some kind of stipulation that the building is done, used for some kind of a purpose within a reasonable amount of time, so. And the one other, one other item there that I did want to mention that I think you'll see on the agenda tonight, and that's a change order that in the process of doing the asbestos abatement at the middle school, they've run into a couple of areas that they ran into some additional things that they weren't counting on, pulling some things out on some pipes and some closets and so on. So there will is a change order that is on, I think, for discussion, I believe, later on in the agenda. So it's for about $6,200. And we're way, still way under budget on that project by quite a bit. So I don't think that that's going to affect, we're not going to certainly go over at all, so. And I think that's pretty much it, unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, thank you.
I did want to add, we do have the resolution for the board to pass regarding the Tiger Den going back to the city, and I missed putting it on the work session agenda, but Jeff was correct, the city's already taken action and we will be asking the board to take formal action next week. So you'll see that on the draft agenda when we release it on Monday.
Okay. All right, Mr. Koch, did the policy committee meet?
Policy committee is scheduled to meet on the 17th at 10:00 a.m. in the morning.
Okay, I'm glad that's not 10:00 a.m. in the evening. That would be really, really weird.
10:00 a.m. on Zoom, we'll be zooming. So anybody who wants to join us remember the board, you're allowed to sit in on that. Okay.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Strauss, did the the safety and security committee meet recently?
Yes, we met on the 9th, and pretty much that's all I can say publicly.
Sure, understood. Just wanted to make it be known that the committee is meeting and is active.
Yes, we are active, and we will be coming forward after legal guidance with a couple purchases we would like to make, but that will after we find out from Mr. Lindsay whether it's okay or not.
Okay, I think I've caught everybody who's met. Are there any other committee reports?
Mr. Strauss?
Yes, Roger.
I think it would also be pertinent if we had the policy committee look at policy 805.3 and try to bring that in line with either PSP and their their standards or possibly the Department of Corrections or the local law enforcement agencies. Agreed.
I'm sorry, Roger, I missed the number. It was 805.3?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great.
We're going to be dealing on the 17th, we're going to be dealing with policies with the pandemic, so we'll deal with that if we have time.
All right, sounds good. Okay, section F, board. We need to name three folks as voting delegates to the 2020 Delegate Assembly of the Pennsylvania School Board Association, meeting on November 7th, 2020. So if anybody would like to volunteer as voting delegates, normally these would be folks who are going to be attending the the annual school, Pennsylvania School Leadership Conference. However, we, I don't recall. I think that is canceled at this point. I don't remember for sure. So this may be a virtual session. So if anybody is interested in that, please, please let Miss Long know and we'll try and get those folks approved next week.
Mr. Miller, could you just let us know what responsibilities or time needed or anything that might help us determine if we can do this?
In general, basically, they're voting the legislative platform and voting for the slate of officers and not a whole lot else. It's it's a very very simple thing, and I don't believe any of the information has been released. They're just asking for the delegates now. Like I said, usually that's an in-person meeting down in Hershey, but at this point, I don't know what that's going to look like. And it's, it's a, that's normally a joint conference between PSBA and PASA. Ms. Martin, do you happen to remember what the status in that conference is?
I think you're correct. I think it's currently going virtual.
I believe so as well.
There's so many things that have gone that way.
I can't keep track of it between
Yeah, yeah.
PSBA and my professional life, it's it's kind of crazy.
Who participated last year?
Last year, I believe it was Mr. Elling, Mrs. Smith, and I don't remember if there was somebody else.
Is that the one I went to as well?
Yes.
Conference? Yeah, you were supposed to come, but you couldn't make it.
That's correct.
It's hopefully they they moved the conference to the spring or another time when the event can happen. It was very valuable, I think, to attend the training. I don't know what Tracy Smith and Roger believe, but I thought it was a great opportunity.
I thought
It's always
Yeah, I've been in previous years and I was quite disappointed that I wasn't able to go this past year, but yeah, it's, it's definitely worthwhile. Okay, next on the agenda is the emergency operation plan, and that would be with the recommendation of the administration. Resolve the Keystone Central School District Board of Directors approve the following recommendation for the board. Approve the emergency operations plan as shown in the exhibit. For board members, that exhibit is shown under executive content. It includes some very, very sensitive information regarding emergency operations. So this is considered a confidential document within the district. However, it does need to have the approval of the board.
Yeah, I saw that. I was hoping that that was only for directors only.
That is correct.
Whoever put this document together, they should be commended. It is absolutely fantastic.
You were a split second ahead of me, Elizabeth. That credit for Mark Condo.
Yeah, it's good.
He, I mean, I don't know what we can do to make sure that, you know, it was, it's phenomenal. And I hope the gentleman had a chance to sleep in the last few months. I can't even imagine the amount of time and effort. And the conversations he must have gone through, but he, that is just a stellar report, and we're very grateful that he's part of your team.
Mark, that, there is really, when I came on board, the district did not have anyone designated as the Act 44 Compliance Officer, and Mark got that role by default. And if you talk to some folks from other districts, that's sometime a full-time role in itself. And so again, kudos to Mark. I know we work very closely with our security officers and members of the board, Randy specifically, Roger. Anybody else on that committee?
Polly.
Polly, to to get this plan ready for your approval. So again, our team of teams is working very well to get a lot accomplished.
Thank you again. I said one quick question. Will this document then, does it just stay internal or does that get shared with the state troopers, local police? I'm just curious.
I'm going to toss to Mark.
Yes, Elizabeth, and I appreciate what you've said, although I would have to say that there's been a lot of folks involved in this process to put this document together, namely our local law enforcement agencies. We've been in contact with State Police Lamar, State Police Rockview, as well as the City Police of Lock Haven, Woodward Township, Renova Police, as well as then the Mill Hall Borough. So each of them will all have a copy of the document. And much like they say of the Constitution, this is a living, breathing document, so we will be updating it frequently as as plans change, as needs change. So certainly those folks, as well as first responders, will have copies as well, such as the County Emergency Management Department as well, which they were also involved in the planning and putting together the documents. So all of those folks will have a copy of a plan when it's approved.
That's wonderful, Mark. Thank you so much. I feel so confident that we have one of the safest school districts that I've ever known. So thank you again. Thank you to all of you.
It's, it really is unfortunate that the general public can't see the the wealth of of work that was put together here, but I'm afraid that we'd probably give them a table of contents and then somewhere around 85 pages of completely blacked out, redacted, redacted pages because they're all very, very closely related to security. So it is what it is.
Yep.
Okay, item G, minutes. Any questions or comments on the various sets of minutes presented there for for review? Hearing none, we'll get into item H, and that's the business section. That's always the big one. Bills for payments. Any questions or comments?
I had a quick question on H1.
Yes, that's bills for payments. That's where we're at.
Page 12. Oh, I'm so sorry. It's, yes, page 12. I know that the district's been talking about this for a long time, and there's other priorities, but maybe in the near future, I mean, I know Liberty Township, this water and sewer, it's completely separate from what we're used to here in Clinton County. But I'm just wondering if they could give us any sort of price break or something considering the schools were closed. I don't know if if there's any way to negotiate anything with them or not, but it is unfortunate that their price compared to everyone else is so high. That's, that's my only comment. And so I'll let that one go. Page nine, I believe it's page 19, bank number 39. I'm just a little, I just was hoping for some clarification. Last time we met, we passed that we were going to spend, I'm just going to roll out some numbers. They're not exact to the penny, but basically last time we met, we passed that we were going to spend $462,291 on the turf replacement at the Central Mountain High School. Okay. Well, then when I'm looking at bank number 39 on page 19, I am confused because when we add some of these numbers up, it's more than 462,000. So I'm just hoping for a little clarification on these other items, if they are, are not directly related to the turf removal project, such as the the bonding, the, any of those other numbers there. They're not adding up to 462.
I'll look into it, Elizabeth, and I'll have an answer for you.
Okay, I really appreciate it. And then just let us know when when you can, what actually is going to be the the real cost for the artificial turf, because we we passed for 462, 291. Thank you so much, Susan. You also do a fantastic job. I appreciate it. Those are my only questions.
Elizabeth, on that one, on the, on that particular page, I only see four lines for Keystone Sports Construction, and that's way under $400,000.
That's what I was just adding up myself.
If you were including the 445 for David M. Main's Associates, that's a different project.
And that's the, that's the middle school.
Okay, thank you so much. See, that's, there was not a line. It just was kind of grouped together. So that really is extremely helpful. But yeah, well, I'm looking forward to staying on top of the turf. I'm real excited about it. So thank you for clarification.
Elizabeth, the turf with bonding and everything should be at the 462 and whatever the change was on that. I believe that was the all-inclusive price for that. It shouldn't be anything over that. And if it is, Susan and I will Keystone Sports to work that out.
Okay, really, I know you guys will. I know you will. But I just, just so it would help us clarify, maybe when this comes up again, there could be just something under the description there. So, you know, when folks, I'm looking at this or anyone else, they they know that they're not they are completely separate issues. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions on bills for payment? Okay, item number two, depositories. This is to approve the list of depositories with, this is where we're going to be keeping our funds and who has signatory authority and how many signatures are needed and all that kind of fun stuff. Any questions or comments?
Beau, if I may, I'd like to draw your attention to number 18. It's a new bank account. That is the only change that would have been added since last year, and that's for the capital fund and the bond issuance that we just did.
Right. Okay. Number three, NRG Controls North Incorporated Agreement. This is to approve an agreement with NRG Controls North for new security cameras and equipment at Bucktail Middle High School and elementary schools. Not to exceed $3,3121 paid for by the Capital Projects Fund and grant funding. Any questions or comments?
This is Elizabeth. I have a real quick question. As, as you all know, I'm super excited about whenever we do 21st century technology. And Beau, I just, President Miller, I just want to make sure, and I just want to hear you say it. I know, I already know what you're going to say, but I want to hear it again. You feel like this is a really great system, something that'll be adaptable, that it's going to last a long time, it's going to get the job done. I'd appreciate your input.
I wouldn't be planning on spending lots and lots of money on the exact same system, expanding the exact same system at the university if I weren't confident in it.
That's wonderful to hear. Thank you so much. I'm super excited about this.
Yep. Resolution 113 and resolution 114 are Resolution one thirteen and resolution one fourteen are related. They're budget transfers and committed funds. This is revisions regarding coming to the end of the fiscal year, if I'm correct. Correct me if I'm wrong, please, Mrs. Blesch.
Nope, you're correct.
Okay, these are just things to, to do budget transfers and change commitment of funds to meet our actuals. And I'm sure that's a wonderful thing to do because we beat our budget this year. So any questions or comments? Hearing none. Number six, Infant Development Transportation Agreement. This is approved transportation services agreement between Keystone Central School District and IDP. Questions, comments? Number seven, Merkey Behavioral Health Agreement. This is to approve the Behavioral Health Services Agreement between Keystone Central School District and Merkey for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Questions or comments? Number eight, Independent Evaluation Agreement. This is to approve the Student Evaluation Agreement between Keystone Central School District and Elite Educational and Therapeutic Support Service for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. This, as well as the previous one, either renewals of previous contracts, are they not?
Correct.
I thought so. Number nine, Food Service Bid. This is to deny. This was for various supplies and so forth. And also number ten, the Nurse Supply Bid. This is a recommendation by administration to deny these. Mrs. Blesch, would you care to give more information on that?
Yeah, we received one valid bid back under both of those items. We would like to rebid them and, and get multiple vendors to respond. I'm not sure if COVID played a role in it or, or not, but we'd like a second chance to get some competitive pricing.
This was, these particular bids involve submission of sample, product samples, did they not? And that may have prevented companies from being able to bid?
Yes, some did. We did allow them the right to waive the submission of the sample if they noted that in their packet. But we are hoping now that things are opening back up, we will get some additional bids.
Great. Any questions or comments on these two items?
Yeah, oh, go ahead, Jeff.
I assume in the past, we've had several bids on these two?
Yes, we, we like, obviously, at least two, if not, you know, ten. Between, between two and ten would give us some comparative pricing.
But we in the past have had several that.
Yes, yep.
And these are multiple vendor model, multiple award, correct? Where, doesn't mean that we have to buy everything that was on the list from one company?
Correct. They are awarded by line item.
That's my thought.
Susan, I, I mean, I know, I don't know of any distributor right now that's not having a problem trying to fill orders, whether it's lumber or paper or whatever. Do you think, or is there any information? I mean, are other school districts going through this also? Is this something that we need to like, maybe just be a little more concerned about?
Well, you'll see items eleven through eighteen are other bids that we have put out for supplies and, and services and such. And we received multiple bids back for all of those areas. I have not heard from other school districts. Food service particularly could be an issue because of the continued feeding program over the past couple of months. I know supplies have been running low in that area. I have not heard anything about nursing. I think it really could have just been a situation where they were, they didn't have time or they were not in their offices to, to do the bid. But the, the rest of them, eleven through eighteen, we received multiple bids back for all of those.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, and with that, eleven through eighteen, these are various bids for things like art supplies, music supplies, municipal waste, which that's all a bunch of junk, you know, quite literally. Audiovisual supplies, office and classroom supplies, custodial supplies, printing and paper. Any questions or comments on these? I know that there were a lot, they were very responsive, lots of bidders. And these are all, with the exception of ones that can't be, they're, they're multiple vendor, multiple award.
I just had a quick question. I know this has been on the district's, you know, radar for a long time. And not to, I'm trying to word this correctly because I don't want to offend anyone, okay? And that's not my, that's not what I'm trying to do now. But I've always been, and I know the district has been very concerned about the cost of picking up the trash from the Bucktail High School and the Renova Elementary in comparison. Now, yes, they do have to travel farther to get to the Clinton County Solid Waste Authority there in Wayne Township. But is there any, any, anything out there that can help lower that price? Any, any, any new information or anything? I deeply appreciate it. Thank you.
I can't imagine. I mean, we are putting it out for, you know, open bidding, and you can see that the Farwell Sanitation and Renova Disposal submitted bids, and they're both significantly above what we, we see in the lower part of the county. Now, I don't know if that's because of extra mileage or what it is, but I believe that Mr. Pacella has a, a plan to possibly lower those costs.
Yes, Mr. Pacella has talked with them about those costs and also has been looking into trash compaction to try to reduce those costs. I know that he's looked at all of those utility costs across the district and has some plans for moving forward to try to reduce where we can. And that does include the water as well.
That's wonderful news. And if, if, if he comes up, does this contract then, once it's signed, if Mr. Pacella has come up with a real tangible way to reduce the price, but this contract then means we're, we're locked in for the school year, but then maybe his plan B would then go into the following twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two? Is that?
Oh, I don't know that we can guarantee you anything like that right now. Depends on what the plan is, when, you know, we will put compactors in. There's a lot to go into it. So I think that may be a better discuss, like, I don't know. We can discuss that at facilities, or I can work with Rob and Susan to, to see if there are any changes. And if there are, we'll bring that back to the board.
Oh, I know, absolutely. I'm, I'm sorry. Let me try to reword this. If we approve this contract, that means the district is locked in for this twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So any new plan or change couldn't take effect, though, until the following fiscal year. That's what I'm trying to say, right?
Unless we renegotiated with them, and then the board approved a different amount.
Okay, so that's an option. Thank you so much.
Any contract can be reopened as long as both parties are amenable to doing so. Again, both parties need to be amenable to doing so, unless we have termination for convenience or anything like that written into the contracts. But I'm not a contract expert, so I'm not going to say that we do or don't. Okay, any other questions or comments on the bids?
I just a question for Susan, just out of curiosity. Was the art bid, given the fact that we did not have used any art equipment, or I should say materials for three months of the school year, did that have any kind of a positive effect on the amount of art supplies? I know we tend to have a lot of art supplies stacked up in different storerooms, and especially since they did not use any for a quarter of the school year. Did that have any impact on, on the amount of things that we had to buy in order?
Go ahead, Susan.
Yes, it actually had an effect on multiple of those bids, not just art. It was, you know, classroom, office supply, the printing, the art bid. There were, there were many. Yes.
There were a lot of things. And I don't know if you recall when we had been closing the budget gap between, I think, March and April. That is when we went back, immediately after our coronation. We sat down with all of the budget heads and relooked at the operating budget numbers because figuring that we would go back to, particularly in supplies across the district, knowing that we would not have used all the supplies, we reduced all of those line items in the operating budget in order to, to balance the budget.
Now, I'm assuming that that would be the same for utilities as well, electric, water, so on.
That we saved money?
Right.
I suspect that will come in under budget in many of those areas, yes.
Those, those are all metered utilities, those, aren't they? So we didn't.
Yeah, they're not bids, but we do expect that will come in under, under budget. When, when everything shakes out, is it usually next month, Susan, or is it August you get final budget numbers?
Yeah, closer to August.
Closer to August.
We, because there's still salary being charged out against the budget through the end of August, so.
But we do suspect that there are some areas that we did save money this, at the end of the school year, particularly substitute teachings, supplies, utilities. Those would be the big ticket items.
Right, right. Thank you.
One thing I'm still curious about is, you know, I look at some of these, I say, I look at the, I know there's no good answer to this, but I find it interesting that we need exactly eighty-nine nine-volt batteries and exactly one thousand two hundred and four AA batteries. So it's just amazing that we come up with that number.
There's a process that happens where each budget head takes requests from individual staff members, and then that gets compiled by building, and then that gets compiled for the district to go into the bid.
Yeah, I mean.
So there is a science.
Nothing bad about it. Just find it amazing that we come up with such specific numbers.
Just so you know, we did not round up.
Well, you know what? If we can save sixty-four cents on a nine-volt battery, we'll take it.
I love you guys.
If a little bit helps.
Absolutely.
That's what tells sense of today's price. You won't get you a cup of coffee.
Might buy you the cup.
Got it.
Okay, number nineteen is Siola. It's Central Inter, it's approved the agreement, agreement with the Central Intermediate Unit Ten to participate in the Online Learning Association, Siola, for the Keystone Central School District's cyber school program for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Questions or comments? This is the same program that we've used in, for the past year for our online learning, for the cyber, or not. Yeah, for the cyber school.
This consortium price also includes professional development for, for staff members. And they, I, I've been very impressed with Siola. Justin Evey is our main contact with Siola, and I, I feel that, I haven't heard anything negative from Justin. And we feel pretty confident moving forward and renewing this contract.
Okay. Number twenty, Valley Truck and Trailer Sales and Services. This is to approve a quote for a Western plow, not to exceed seventy-two hundred dollars paid for by the general fund. Questions or comments?
Sorry?
Oh, just a quick question. I'm, I'm not questioning whether or not it's needed. That's not the, that's not the question. I'm just, what, what's it going to be used for and where? I'm just kind of curious. Or is it replacing something, or just a little update, please?
I believe it's a snow plow for one of our enterprise rental vehicles.
Yes, it actually should have been approved back in November as part of that enterprise fleet with that first set of vehicles that we approved in November. And I thought it was, but as we looked back through our paperwork, I saw that it, it was not added to that agenda at the time, so we are now approving it.
That, that's why you'll see that the date on the quote is from December.
Thank you so much. That makes sense. Thank you.
Number twenty-one, Ehrlich. We all know what they do. This is approved the quest, quote from Ehrlich for Pest Control Services for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, not to exceed two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars paid for by the general fund. Questions or comments?
I have a quick question. I'm sort of assuming this is for rodents or any other insects that might be in the buildings. But this is my question. Because all the air sealing is going to be happening at some of these buildings, is it hoped that infiltration will be somewhat reduced or greatly reduced?
Well, I guess we could only assume so, but I'm not sure how we would measure it.
And this is also for bi-monthly inspections as well. So we don't just call them when we have an infestation. It's a inspection.
Well, would, would everyone then find this interesting, that after these buildings are air sealed, that they could give us a report, like, compared to like last year or the year before? Just so we, hopefully we see some decline. Any interest there?
I'm honestly hoping that we didn't see that much in the past, and this was just us being, exercising an abundance of caution.
I'm, I'm not sure what you're seeking, Elizabeth.
Oh, I'm just saying, they're coming out and they're, they're inspecting. And if they find something, I'm sure they're making a record of it, and they're doing what they need to do. I just think it would be interesting and maybe beneficial, considering the, the group is working so hard to air seal these buildings, that if, for comparison reasons, maybe, I'm sure they must have a record maybe from last year, the year before. And then after these buildings are sealed, then see if their monthly inspections actually see a decline. I mean, that's, because if they don't see a decline, that says something else. But that, that's just my comment for consideration.
I would recommend that be referred to the Facility Committee for further consideration.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Greg Pedigree Keystone Security. This is to approve the quote from Greg Pedigree slash Keystone Security for District Alarm Services for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year, not to exceed one thousand four hundred and forty dollars paid for by the general fund. This is for central monitoring of our alarm systems. Two hundred and forty dollars for each location times six buildings. This is an increase of seventy-two dollars from last year overall. Any questions or comments? All right, Fry's Fire Protection. This is to approve the quote for Fry's Fire Protection for annual fire extinguisher and fire suppression system inspections for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, per the payment terms in the exhibit paid for by the general fund. Questions or comments? Twenty-four, Johnson Controls. This is to approve the quote from Johnson Controls for the District Fire Alarm Services for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year, not to extend, not to exceed seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars paid for by the general fund. Questions or comments? Okay, number twenty-five, Enterprise Agreement. This is approved the exhibit from Enterprise for District Fleet Program for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. This is part of the five-year agreement previously approved, not to exceed two thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars per month paid for by the general fund. This is just a continuation of what we're already doing. Questions or comments? Number twenty-six, Workers' Compensation Insurance. This was competitively bid. This would, recommended action is to award the bid to Eastern Alliance for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year for workers' compensation insurance, not to exceed two hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars paid for by the general fund. It looks like we did receive several bids. Looks like.
We'll give you that information, Mr. Miller, by next week.
Okay. All right, sounds good. It looks like some also declined, but we did get some bids. Questions or comments on that? Okay, number twenty-seven. This is approved the agreement for NWEA MAP Growth System for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year, not to exceed twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents paid for by title grant funds.
If I could just speak to twenty-six and twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-seven and twenty-eight together?
Yes, absolutely, because they're both assessments.
They are assessment tools. For this current year, the district has been using Ames Web Assessments for students in K through eight, I believe, and. eight, uh, I believe, and students who, um, have learning disabilities. And one of the things we did, um, Justin Evi is our assess, district assessment coordinator, coordinator, ran a committee and included administrators and teachers to look at the difference between the NWEA MAP system. MAP stands for Measures of Academic Progress alongside of the Ames Web Program. Both programs assess similar things in different manners, but the MAP system also provides a lot of other resources and reports that make it more user friendly to use the data. It helps group students. It shows you an exact readiness level, where students are, where they're ready for instruction based on what they got correct 50% of the time. And so it becomes, um, very valuable to us in a way that it is not only a, um, a benchmark assessment, it's also, it can be a summative assessment for the school year as well as a growth tool to measure growth three times a year, fall, winter, spring. And it's a norm reference, it's nationally norm reference because our students would take that assessments in the same timeframe as students across the nation. And so it's very, very helpful. It's a useful piece of information. It's not a cumbersome assessment for students to take. They can take the assessment within 20 to 40 minutes, fall, winter, spring. It's very manageable. It's easy to administer and again, super valuable. We did not believe, we're planning to use the MAP Growth System for students in grades two through eight. And maybe a few other students, uh, maybe ESL or some other, um, students who may be at risk in the upper grades. But the Ames Web Assessment, we would use strictly for K through two and any student who has an IEP or is thought to be exceptional. So we have two separate tools available and if our team felt that the Ames Web Assessment was most appropriate for students in the younger grades. And I, um, agree that the, what we get from Ames Web is perfectly fine for what we need in grades K through two. So MAP is an additional, um, tool that we're using, but our, um, we use Ames Web in the past, but in, again, we're replacing the total cost of Ames Web from the previous year because we were purchasing way less licenses.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments on either 27 or 28? Since we're addressing them as a group.
Um, with the Ames Web, I'm taking a look at this and it says Keystone Central School District first quote. Are we expecting other quotes on this?
I'm, no, I'm not expecting any other quotes on this.
I'm assuming that's just the file naming, no, file naming nomenclature that, uh, the vendor used when they sent us the quote.
650 is the, the unit price and Justin, if I'm correct, they did not raise that rate from last year.
That is correct. And, and it says quote one because they did a quote for the exact number that we wanted. And then they did a quote, um, based upon the number of licenses that we used last year, which was a lot more than what we needed for this year.
Okay.
I, I, yeah, I think this sounds like a really great tool. Uh, it sounds to me like, uh, it's going to be really useful for all of those, uh, for those grade levels and it's going to be, I think, going to be helpful, very helpful for them in, in planning and instruction and so on.
We, we had, um, many teachers in our elementary with our Title I teachers along with DPLs and T, just looking at Ames Web data and then targeting intervention strategies on a daily basis to work with students to close specific skill gaps. Uh, but the amount of time that it took for those teachers to dissect and group the students using the Ames Web data was a lot of time and effort. However, the MAP system doing that electronically for them already is much more user friendly and they can spend their time actually working with students on skills as opposed to disaggregating data.
Yeah, much more, much more efficient. Use of their time.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Not, we'll move on to number 29. This is a change order for Gordian for the Central Mountain Middle School Project, not to exceed $6,238.18 paid for by the 2020 bond issuance. Uh, this is, uh, related to the asbestos removal. Uh, unfortunately, sometimes you get into this kind of work and, uh, you find more than what you thought you had and, uh, you don't have the option to not remove it. So any questions or comments? Okay, that gets us out of the, out of the board section. So we'll move into I1 Personnel. We have our normal personnel, uh, actions shown in the work session meeting PDF attachment and two job descriptions, uh, that are attached here as well. Any discussion on these matters?
Um, any updates from the administration? Um, if there's any, you know, good news here, please share it with us.
I just wanted to mention the interventionist, um, job title in job description. It's in draft form until you approve it. My idea, and I had talked to the Personnel Committee about this, was to, um, turn our Title I positions into interventionist positions. Changing away from just doing a reading only program to reading math intervention. Um, however, what we want to do is change the um, perception, I guess, and also the thought process of hiring interventionists that do have potentially a reading specialist certification as a preferred certification. Reading is a very complex skill and reading specialists need to be, are able to, um, diagnose reading difficulties and then also prescribe skills and, and drills and activities for students to close those deficits. And so we want to make sure that we had some interventionists with that special, um, special certification, uh, in and around the district. We did create this on the bid sheet as an interview position. We had 17 teachers who were, um, who interview bid, so to speak. Um, and I know that Megan Hall, uh, conducted the interview process with several teachers and administrators on that committee. They selected 10 interventionists who are temporary, they currently temporarily in that position pending the board approving this job title. Um, and additionally, um, the 10 is the exact same number of Title I positions we had in the district. We feel that some of our most experienced teachers and our best qualified teachers need to be working with our most struggling students. The different mindset that we've used in the past in the district, but that's the, the reason behind it.
That's fantastic, Super Martin. This is really exciting. Thank you all so much for putting this together. Thank you very much.
Any other questions on Personnel Matters?
Mark, I think this would be a good time to explain the, the difference of the reason for the PCA or anybody from the Personnel Committee.
I, I think that, I don't want to speak for Mark, but I know that that came from our discussion on the new agreement with the, with the support people. And it gives us a whole lot more flexibility as far as what we, from what we had before in using these folks, but Mark, you can give them more detail and.
And these positions, um, are incredibly important in our schools. Um, oftentimes they are, um, assigned to some of our, our neediest students and, uh, when we went into negotiations with the support group, we certainly looked at those positions and we wanted to, um, basically strengthen the, uh, the positions in terms of training and requirements for staff that fill those positions. So that's what that, uh, job description sort of represents. Um, it's, there's a few more requirements that they have to have in terms of CPR training and be, um, trained also in, in passive restraint techniques. So that's what the job description, um, the change is all about. And, uh, I believe then the contract is there for you to consider, um, under the negotiation section. So I won't speak to that at this point, but.
Okay. Definitely think the PCA position is, uh, is much needed. It needs to be called out for what it is. It's not, uh, simply the building, simply the same thing as a building assistant or anything like that. There's a certain set of duties that go along with being a PCA that, uh, I mean, it's, it's kind of a thankless job, but, uh, we absolutely need to attract and retain qualified folks to, uh, to do that particular job. Moving on to item J, Athletics. Uh, this is just our normal athletics personnel agenda. Uh, approve the list of volunteers, uh, game workers, and, uh, there's a couple of resignations on there as well. Any questions or comments?
I just, oh, go ahead, Roger, please.
I do have one, uh, question. I saw that there's a Dakota McCloskey. Isn't that supposed to be Dakota? Or do we know?
Yes, his name.
There's someone else there.
No, his name is Dakota.
We can check, we'll check the spelling and fix that for the approval.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just had a quick question. Um, if, uh, game workers are hired and for some reason, who knows, who knows? They can't have an athletic program. Does that mean we still have to pay? I'm assuming the game workers are just, when you have a game, it's hourly and that.
Paid by, they get paid by the game.
Yep, super. Thank you for the clarification.
It says right under the asterisk, per event basis.
Yep, thank you very much.
All right, uh, let's go on to negotiations. Uh, we have three MOUs with various law enforcement agencies. They're going to be, uh, memorandum of understanding with Lamar Pennsylvania State Police, with the Mill Hall Police Department and, uh, the Renova Police Department. Uh, Mr. Condo, could you speak to what those are, uh, why they are needed? Okay, maybe he's not here anymore. Um, Ms. Martin, do you want to fill everyone in?
Yeah, this is a recommendation, um, and apparently a requirement, um, in the school code to have the MOUs with the various police departments and the municipalities and the jurisdiction within the district boundaries. And in the past, I believe we had some of these, um, because we were under the, but we were under our own jurisdiction as a police department, but in order to comply with the school code and the recommendations that were provided to us, we're, um, updating and obtaining new MOUs with all of these police entities.
Okay. Questions or comments on these MOUs? They're, they're basically just necessary to define, you know, how we interact with law enforcement and, uh, what their responsibilities are and, uh, things of that nature.
Mark was offline. He's back.
Okay. Well, I think you gave a pretty good, uh, description of it. All right. And, uh, last, uh, on our list here is K4. This is negotiations and this is with the recommendation of the administration. Resolved that the Keystone Central School District Board of Directors approves the following recommendation for the board. Approved the Keystone Central Educational Support Professionals Contract for 2020 through 2024, as shown in the exhibit. And, uh, that draft is shown there for your reading pleasure, I guess. So any, uh, any feedback on that? Obviously, I would say that I would like to thank the, uh, the members of, uh, that bargaining unit, uh, for engaging in, uh, thoughtful discussion and, uh, and working with us on coming together on an agreement that I think, uh, is, uh, mutually beneficial and, uh, we all come out in a better place than, uh, maybe we were in the past. All right.
I agree. And I also think that some of the things in this contract are going to go a long way to benefit our students in the, in immediately and as well as in the future.
Yep. Okay, uh, with that, that brings us to the end of our work session agenda. Is there any further items that we need to discuss tonight before we adjourn? If not, uh, the board does have an executive session and board members, you should have received the, uh, the private link for that. If there's nothing else, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So be it.
Thank you, Mr. Elling. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Without objection, this board stands adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.